Good afternoon. The planning board is going to have a meeting tonight. We have a forum present and the first order of business. Thank you. The first order of business are the minutes from the meeting on the 29th of November. I'll give you a moment to read them if you haven't already. I'll need a motion to accept them or amend them.
I'm moved to accept the minutes.
One second. Okay, there's been a motion made by Michelle and a second by Avrin who accept the minutes as presented. Discussion on the motion done. Those in favor of the motion? No opposition. Thank you very much. Okay, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct a site plan review, which is section 125, 111, and the zoning ordinance on an apartment complex to be constructed at 70 Spring Street. We have individuals on Zoom and planning board members and public in attendance. Are there any? I'll start with Mr. Bird. Is there any questions you have in regard to this meeting?
I don't. Just that it may be helpful for me to provide an update in that I was unable to secure the letter of interest that I had been working on prior to the meeting today. So in communicating with the chair, he felt it was still worthwhile having the meeting tonight. So I appear to answer any questions or, you know, if anything else has come up in some of the planning board members' minds or the public's minds, but know that we're still working on the letter and I expect to have it soon. But be welcome to, if it's within your adopted rules and regulations to provide, assuming there is support for our proposal, to do so on a conditional basis pending, you know, satisfactory evidence of financing or something like that. I'm not, I don't want to jump ahead and assume you're in support of it, but if that's the direction of the planning board, we have seen this before with other projects where the municipality will provide some sort of conditional approval and this can be some sort of administrative last step. So if that's something that the planning board or the town in general would support, we would welcome that and would be welcome to welcome to satisfy that step down the road by giving us some certainty now and allowing us to perhaps proceed with our project in the interim.
All right. Thank you very much. Lou, I saw your hand raised. I don't know if you were doing something to try to get my attention. Let me ask the planning board members, are there any questions before we embark on this review tonight? Michelle? And I'll ask the public in attendance if there's any questions that, yes, please come forward and speak into the mic. Identify yourself.
Okay, so now? Hello? Thank you. Spellet, 330 Congress Street. I know you adjourned this last meeting for this document to be presented. So it's not presented, so I know it's going to be up to you, but I was interested to make sure everything was secured before we go along with this. So that's just all I'm going to say.
And the document you're referring to is the fiscal?
Yeah, the one you was demanding that we had a seat tonight when we left. That's why you postponed the other meeting until today.
Well, no, that wasn't the reason, but that is something that in the criteria in this section 125, 111, it's part of the criteria and we'll have to address that as we get down to that part.
Okay, I'm just trying to feel my way around when to get up, when not sit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I'm going to move right in. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
You're all right. Steve Golub, 126 Lincoln. I just want to first say thank you for going through this review process and going through all the proper notices to the public and whatnot. I understand it's a long, drawn out process and just appreciate your work on it. I personally am in favor of this development. I think it's a great opportunity for the town. I just want to also note, as you all know, the council did make some adjustments recently to the ordinances that allow for this development to take place without issue. They were not drastic changes as you had recommended to the council to allow for these types of developments to take place. But overall, just in support of this, I think it'll really help the tax base as well. It is a for-profit entity that will own this property. It'll be roughly, you know, $7 million project from what was said at a previous council meeting. And that's a practical property that we can all as a community benefit from. So in support of it, I also want to just note, although that that financial piece is a part of the criteria, the planning board does have the right to waive that as well going through this process, which I'm sure you know, even though it was requested for that information and I'm sure it will be coming at some point. It is also something that can be waived. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Tori?
Yes.
Skewie Pellet here, 222 Congress Street. Just to address Mr. Levitt's point there. My service on the planning board for over 30 years, we've done this numerous times, conditionally approve a project. So I don't see any problem with that going forward. I'm sure they'll come up with necessary paperwork and they'll be able to go ahead. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If there's no other comment, Steve, Don?
Don Nodine, 18 Hill Street, Millinocket. I observe a lot of apartments on Warsaw Street. My question is, how many empty apartments? You know, whether one bedroom apartment or two or three bedroom apartments, but how many empty apartments are there up there?
No, I'm not aware of empty apartments per se. Someone wants to address the question?
I will.
I guess the answer is not going to be forthcoming, Don. I don't have that information. What I'd like to do is, if there's no other questions, move right into section 125, 111. Section 125, 111. I'll just read the beginning so we get all on the same page. The planning board is in reviewing projects requiring site plan under this part two, which is the zoning ordinance, shall make positive written by the, as submitted clear existing evidence. And we'll go through each of these points. Some of this is going to be my ad lib comments, not the document that I'm referring to. Some of these sections are going to be not applicable or just a quick response. The extent that we can minimize votes on each section, because there's 15 in this, in this section, 15 paragraphs to deal with, it might be more efficient time wise.
Thank you. You too.
Sorry. Oh, hi Heidi. All right. I noted your attendance and the time. I'll start with paragraph A. It says adequate provision has been made for off-street parking and loading. And what I've got here is my concerns about the off-street parking. It says the apartment complex is approved for one vehicle per rental unit. Additional visitor parking is to be identified. If anybody wants to comment on that, this is a concern that I have. And I think it was raised by myself and maybe others on discussing this matter in November 1 and November 29. But essentially, this is going to be with approval of the planning board members. This is going to be stipulated in the findings for off-street parking dealing with this requirement under the criteria. Any comments about the comments I've made about the one vehicle per rental unit and additional parking to be identified on the lot? It was stated there is space for additional parking, but I think it needs to be identified. And that's why I put it in here. Any comments, please? Done? We'll move on. I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. Yes, Michelle? No, you must be muted.
I can never find that thing when it comes time. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I've been thinking about this since our last meeting. And I have had occasion to live in and visit numerous apartment buildings across the country. And including independent living kind of places. And I cannot see how two extra parking spaces is sufficient for that kind of, that kind of space. I, you know, I used to visit my mom in a place like that. I visited my grandparents in places like that. Those places aren't just one person per one parking space per unit kind of places. You know, let's say my grandmother has her car there and I go visit her. Well, where's my car going to go? I got one or two spaces, but if three people want to come and visit, it gets to be kind of ugly. I don't know. Or do we have a capacity to do how like underground parking or elevated parking or anything like that? Because it just doesn't sound tenable to me.
The comments were made pertaining to the size of the lot and that available parking would be accommodated in the northwest corner of the property. And I forgot the exact numbers, if they were exact numbers. But the Roostick Avenue School might use the front of the building, which are nine spaces. And then there's ample space behind those parking places that would accommodate, I believe, at least two rows of, and maybe more. The parking place according to the is nine feet, nine, five feet, nine, I'll speed it out, excuse me, nine feet wide and 18 feet long.
Okay. But my, my point is, it does not sound like adequate space or ample parking.
No, the two parking places were questioned as far as being adequate. And that's why my comments state that additional visitor parking be identified.
But you've got people coming into the ballet classes. You've got all sorts of different people who aren't really residents of the building. How are you, how are they figuring ample versus not ample?
We're the ones figuring ample versus not ample.
How is that here? How is that figured is my question?
The two parking places for development, for this development didn't seem sufficient. And what we're trying to do is to make sure that there's at least an attempt to get something identified on the lot to accommodate the expected parking that might be necessary for visits to the complex.
I don't think you're understanding my question. How is, what formula is used or what logic is used in order to decide what is and is not adequate for the space? Do you know what I'm saying? We don't just pick a number. What kind of math goes into that?
I don't have math that goes into that. If someone that has knowledge of this, like Mr. Bird, Randy, and Greg, he might have something that he could lend this topic. But essentially, two places for 36 apartment complexes seems insufficient.
That was sort of my point. But even with the extra, I just want to know how you figure it so we can see, well, is it actually adequate? Because around Christmas time, people come to visit their grandparents and their parents. You're not going to get two people or even five people. You might have 20 people. Do you know, am I making sense? That's
that we could anticipate as many visitors per unit than you just indicated. Possible, yes. Likely, possibly not. I just want to make sure that if this project gets approved, that we took sufficient steps to accommodate individuals that would be visiting this complex.
Right. So we don't have any math or any formula. How do we figure out what adequate is?
Like I said, Michelle, I think it seems, I would say, what seems to be plausible for a complex of this size needs to be discussed and experienced, make sure that as this project, if it does get developed, actually allows for visitor accommodation that might be expected to come to this. I don't have the formula.
Well, I don't, I don't understand how we can possibly, Jason, do you know?
Yeah, so I, yeah, I have had my hand raised. Happy to, happy to speak to that. So we traditionally have a formula of one parking space for every one bedroom apartment. When we build two and three bedroom apartments, naturally we try to err on like two, two and a quarter, two and a half parking spaces per, per unit or per home. Of the, of all of the older adult properties that we've ever built, we usually have two to three spaces in terms of visitor spaces, knowing though that many of the residents that we're going to serve don't drive. In the event in this situation, we do have every resident having their own parking space. Yes, we have the two visitor spaces. But one thing that we've done, and I can show my screen if it's helpful, to bring back up the map again here, if you bear with me. Because of, and it should be, you can all see the site plan now?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the intent here is, and I'm going to try to draw on this, but I don't think I have the right version to really draw. But as I had highlighted in the past meetings, but our plan is to utilize the existing parking space, parking spaces, parking area to the north of the former Everestick Avenue School. The reason why, so the intent would be that we have it as a leased space and flexible space. Because what we really don't want is to create parking for every possible scenario and then have a lot of stuff vacant that we have to plow, maintain and repave. Look at any shopping mall right now and you can see across America, even during the holidays, they're barely used, right? So we don't want to be in a position of just paving everything because while, you know, over a short period of time, there could be 10 visitors in the building. And so with the 25 or so extra spaces that we feel like we can accommodate here above and beyond what would be needed when we fully renovate the brick or the Everestick Avenue School building, we feel like that's more than adequate to cover visitors to the 36 units in the new building as well as on occasion, naturally for pickup, drop off practices or what have you, the ground floor dance studio is going to have a very small, you know, time window of a surge for parking needs. And like I said, it isn't financially viable or it doesn't make sense to have now 150 spaces because there could in theory be at one point, all those spaces used. So with, with the parking that can be accommodated here on, onsite and, you know, God forbid during the, you know, warmer months, on-street parking, we feel like there's more than adequate space. But our intent though, just to drive home the point, is to have a lease agreement between this the property that will own this and we need this for not only street frontage, but for density provisions, right? But we will have a reciprocal agreement that allows visitors to use these spaces. The other challenge being if, if this part of the parcel was owned by the entity that's going to own this building, it becomes very difficult for us to allow members of the public to park there because our investors don't allow for us to put money into an accommodation that benefits the non-residents, right? So it's just a lot easier for us to split the, you know, split the hair down the middle and allow for a lease agreement back where our, the guests of the new building can utilize the other space versus the other way around. Hopefully that makes sense.
I think I have just a follow-up real quick. You say you expect to have extra and I see that. A lot of seniors aren't going to have cars. And if you're living in Millinocket, maybe you don't need one so much. But let's say we've got the spaces. Spaces are all Christmas Eve. I drive up to visit grandma. There, there's no spaces in the, you know, where I would expect them. How am I going to ascertain that the people who, the parking spaces that are not doled out, given to somebody already, are parking spaces where I can park as opposed to somebody who ran to the store and comes back and now I'm in the parking space? Do you have that figured out or is that for them?
So parking for each tenant will be labeled with their unit number. So if someone doesn't have a car and they're living in unit 125, or just throwing a number out there, you know, their visitor would be expected to park in their space. That would make the most sense. Beyond that, we communicate that the additional parking to the tenants. So if, you know, they're communicating with the visitor, they can say, hey, and park in the shared parking or the parking lot just across the driveway. And we'll also have signage as well that says visitor parking essentially. So it's a little bit flexible. And again, allowing it to be more of a communal asset in use versus it being strictly for, you know, visitors of a certain building or another.
Thank you. That sort of answers my question probably as well as it can be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. There's no other comments concerning this matter?
No, I'm satisfied. This is adequate provision. We need to move on.
I could call for a vote on this one matter since we got quite a bit of discussion. We'll proceed as I indicated and we'll try to make as best use of our time to avoid going through numerous votes 15 times. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hi, yes, I thought we thoroughly reviewed this last week. And I thought Jason did a good job about even being able to put something in a contract that says they can only have one space. These are elderly people and these are individuals that we have the same thing going on in every one of our elderly complexes. So I don't know why we're making this a big deal. I don't know why, you know, that we don't trust the fact that these guys and the engineers that do this on a regular basis for elderly are accommodating these, these needs and understand that most people don't even have vehicles. Most people don't have people that are going to come and visit them. They're going to go visit their kids because they don't put on meals anymore. They don't do any of this stuff. So I think we need to get back to the issue at hand and what we're voting on, not about parking spaces.
I have to say, I'm a senior citizen, very eligible for that, and I have my grandchildren here and I'm cooking. So I mean, I don't know that we can put a lot of old people in that bucket, but okay.
As long as we're satisfied, if that's the case, that parking sufficient to accommodate the complex, 36 units plus available visitor accommodations has been discussed, so move on. Let's settle better, a little more than we have at this point. If there's no other comments, then I will move on. I have not heard anyone say they want to vote on this one matter. Like I said, like I said, I'd like to avoid taking numerous votes if we can take, take a vote at the end of this.
Your mic is off.
Yeah, it keeps on going off. Second issue to the criteria we addressed is adequate provision has been made for traffic movement of all types, including pedestrian into, out of, and within. The proposed project, the board shall consider traffic movement both on the site and off the site in making the determination under this criteria. These criteria deal with different projects. This is a residential setting. This is not a shopping mall or things of that nature. So the terminology used here might be viewed as being a little over the top. But essentially, I think traffic movement has been, I would say addressed in the sense that there's ample parking for the facility and the need for additional visitor parking has already been discussed. And this will be written in the findings once this review is completed. Any comments concerning item B about traffic movements on site? No one on the Zoom? I'm going to move on. C, any traffic increase attributable to the proposed project will not result in unreasonable congestion and unsafe conditions on a road in the vicinity of the proposed development. will not result in unreasonable congestion and/or unsafe conditions on a road in the vicinity of the proposed development. The, uh, issue about traffic movement was discussed, uh, I think on November first meeting, and it was mentioned about the, uh, International Transportation Engineers Manual being referenced, uh, concerning, uh, traffic, uh, generated by this complex. I'll also mention that, uh, I got a response, uh, to an inquiry from the, uh, police chief, and, uh, let me just, uh, mention what, uh, Chief McDonough, uh, McDonough has said. I don't have a date on his, uh, response, but essentially this has been something that was, uh, uh, sent by him some time ago. It says, "To whom it may concern, the East Millinocket Police Department, which is contracted to provide police services to the town of Millinocket, is in support of the proposed multi-story housing project located at Seventy Spring Street in Millinocket. Is very evident, there is a great need for affordable housing in the Katsadon region, and the proposed project looks to begin to address that issue. I am confident that my agency will be able to handle the increase in call volume, uh, that can be associated with large-scale apartment complexes. The East Millinocket Police Department is confident in our working relationship with the community and town officials, and any potential problems will be addressed professionally and appropriately, making the proposed housing project a safe housing opportunity in our community." And it was signed by, uh, Chief McDonough. Any other comments by individuals concerning C about, uh, traffic increase attributable to this project? I'm gonna move on, excuse me, I'm gonna move on to D. It says, "The proposed project will be built on soils which are suitable in the nature of the, to the nature of the project, and that adequate provision has been made to avoid erosion, contamination of ground, surface water, inter- uh, interference with adequate land, interference with, uh, adjacent land, excuse me, overburdening of natural or artificial drainage systems, and/or any other adverse effect of of inadequate drainage." Uh, we discussed at the, uh, meetings about how, uh, surface water was gonna be handled, uh, with, uh, catch basins around the perimeter of the, uh, structure. And we also discussed, uh, uh, drainage from the roof system, which is gonna be a flat roof system on this facility. My opinion, if I could start the ball rolling, I, I think, uh, we have addressed the concerns of, of this project being located at the, at this location and, uh, how, uh, surface water especially will be, uh, uh, accommodated with the, uh, facility, um, being constructed with these catch basins and a tie-in to the, uh, sewer system on Spring Street. Let me ask for comments from the planning board members? Comments, comments from the, uh, individuals on Zoom, please? I'll move on to, uh, paragraph E. Adequate provision has been made to locate and design proposed outdoor display and a storage area, uh, so as to avoid any safety hazard to veh- uh, vehicular and pedestrian traffic on and off the site. Uh, essentially, my comments when I was drafting, uh, my format for this meeting is, that's not applicable. Again, this is not a, a retail accommodation, this is a, uh, an apartment complex. There will be no outside displays of storage areas, uh, per se. Comments from, uh, individuals on the planning board? Comments by individuals, uh, on the Zoom platform? Uh, Lou, uh, you have a comment, please? I'm not hearing any, uh, any comment. I don't know if your microphone is off, Lou, I just wanna let you know we're gonna move on if, uh,
I'm fine, yeah.
All right, thank you. I'll move on to, uh, paragraph F. Adequate provision has been made to avoid any hazard to travel on public or private ways or any, uh, glare or other business, uh, to the use of adjoining public or private property. And I don't think that's, that's gonna be an issue, uh, again, uh, this is an apartment complex. Uh, this is not a large development that's gonna have, uh, uh, private, uh, road system, uh, that would be in addition to, uh, what's already on, on public ways with Spring Street, Congress, and, uh, Penobscot Avenue, uh, surrounding these, uh, this location. Is there any comment from planning board members relative to paragraph F? Uh, comments from individuals on the Zoom platform? Not hearing any, I'm gonna move on to G. Adequate provision has been made with regard to buffers, screening, landscaping, and the preservation and enhancement of significant natural features. Well, I don't know about the significant natural features, but I know there was discussion about, uh, the facility being constructed in proximity to adjacent properties, and I've got, uh, something I wanna, uh, run before the planning board members and the public in attendance. It's suggested for consideration that, uh, evergreen trees that are five to seven feet in height at a spacing not greater than twenty feet separation between the trees for the length of the east lot line be planted, and fifteen trees would be, uh, involved in this process. Other landscaping should be done as depicted in the revised plot plan dated October fourteenth of this year, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, I'll open this for discussion on, uh, on this matter about, uh, accommodations for, uh, a screening. Uh, this is something that, uh, is not specified in the zoning ordinance for neighborhood commerc- a neighborhood commercial zone butting against a residential zone. Uh, it is discussed in the zoning ordinance, but the accommodation is a construction of a fence, uh, uh, a barrier, if you will, and I think that's, uh, not something that's being, uh, anticipated here as beneficial, uh, to, uh, accommodate adjoining, uh, adjoining properties or would be, uh, necessary to separate the apartment complex uh, from the residential properties on Congress Street. Uh, comments by individuals, uh, on the planning board concerning, uh, planting of, uh, evergreen trees of a five to seven foot height, uh, at a spacing not greater than twenty feet along the east, uh, boundary of the, uh, of the lot? Uh, Mr. Byrd, obviously this is something that, uh, we haven't addressed in the two previous meetings. Uh, it was mentioned about, uh, accommodations, or at least, uh, concerns about, uh, uh, the structure being located in close proximity to, uh, these residential properties on Congress Street. Uh, do you wish to comment about, have any comments concerning this suggested, uh, planting on, on, uh, on this property?
Uh, no concerns, I, I think that's a reasonable request, um, and had a, a very brief conversation with Mr. Levitt, uh, around their desire, I believe, to see a fence and the shrubbery, the type of shrubbery you've mentioned, and I think, um, we can, we can certainly accommodate that.
Is there any other comments from individuals on the Zoom platform?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Lou.
Uh, I, I think that's, uh, quite a reasonable accommodation and I applaud the developer for agreeing to it. Uh, it, it'll go a long ways from breaking up, you know, a big blank wall in their backyard. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, let me mention, uh, this, uh, concern was, uh, raised by, uh, Mr. Levitt when he came before us on the first and the twenty-ninth. Uh, can I ask you, sir, do you have comments relative to the planting of, uh, these, uh, evergreens of a height of five to seven feet?
Not really, like I said, I've talked to Mr. Byrd, if this project goes along, that, you know, we can easily adjust the different things, but from last week, from the last meeting, what worries me now is that if we are hitting, it's gonna depend on if what that is under that ground, like last meeting we were discussing, they could be coal ash, or how far they're gonna dig, so that's gotta be in consideration because they don't know what's under that ground. If they can plan anything, or if they're gonna dig sixteen, fifteen feet down and replace everything, like you said, that's gonna be a thing for looking for the money to get it if they have to dig fifteen feet down to get their foundation. That's the only concern I have since the last meeting, when you brought it out that we were talking about what's under that ground, so I don't know if, you know, how the growth of trees and everything's gonna be, but that's just one concern. And like you said, that can't even be addressed until after the project's approved, but like I said, what happens if, you know, I don't know, I don't know the answer, but like I said, I, I've talked to Mr. Byrd. You know, if everything's great, then it's possibly, we can meet in the middle, so that's the only thing I have to say.
All right, thank you. Uh, as far as, uh, uh, accommodating this stipulation about, uh, evergreen trees being spaced no more than twenty feet along that east property line, there is, uh, uh, volunteer, uh, uh, trees growing along the fence line, plus there's a large pine on, on an adjoining property. Uh, I would imagine that, uh, there would be sufficient, uh, opportunity for, for, uh, something that's put there as a, uh, as a screening for the, uh, two, uh, sides of the property, of the, uh, area to be developed for the apartment complex and the existing residential properties, uh, could be accommodated on, uh, on the site. Uh, and was also, um, made mention here, I'll bring it up, S W Cole, uh, engineering, uh, will provide a test, uh, uh, boring, uh, report. Uh, this is doing with the, uh, addressing the suitability of the site, uh, that was in discussion, was discussed on, uh, November twenty-ninth, uh, but won't be, uh, finalized until, uh, the applicant actually, uh, takes test borings. Thank you. Any other comments by individuals on the planning board or the zoning platform? Uh, yes, go ahead, please.
Is that me? Michelle?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, Michelle, yes.
Okay, just a quick question. I know this sounds stupid, but I'm trying to picture it. These trees are five feet tall, that's when you put them in? Or do they grow five feet tall?
Right, five to seven foot, uh, evergreens.
So they will, on the day they're put in there, they will already be providing some sort of a protection shield or something, right?
Yes, they'll be, uh, their, their presence will be visible because of their, you know, size when they're planted, five to seven feet, especially seven feet is is not small, but, uh, essentially it's, uh, it's something that is in our zoning ordinance for accommodations and stipulates that, uh, the, uh, evergreen would be of that size.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other comments, I'm gonna move on. H, adequate provision has been made to avoid unreasonable adverse effects on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, rare and irreplaceable, uh, natural areas, existing uses, air quality, water quality, or other natural, uh, resources within the, uh, town or in, uh, neighboring neighboring towns, uh, quite a, quite a significant, uh, area being considered here. Uh, again, this is, uh, uh, something that would, uh, deal with issues or concerns that would be, uh, quite, uh, large as far as, uh, a, a project. This project is, uh, uh, on a site that's, uh, about three hundred feet long, I think two hundred, two hundred fifty feet wide, uh, I don't think it's gonna be, uh, impacting the, uh, aesthetics of the area, the historic sites, I don't think there's anything there. But I just, uh, wanna get comments back from the planning board members, and then we'll ask for the Zoom, uh, individual on the Zoom platform. Individual, uh, individuals on the Zoom platform, is there any, uh, comments relative to, uh, H, which is, uh, what I just read about the avoiding unreasonable adverse effects on, uh, on the scenic and aesthetic quality of the area? Hearing none? I'll move on to I. Whenever a project is situated in whole or in part within two hundred and fifty feet, and I'm not gonna go any further, there's more verbiage here, but essentially this project is nowhere near two hundred and fifty feet in proximity to Millinocket Stream. Essentially, in my opinion, I is not applicable to this project. Individuals on the planning board, any concerns? Anybody on the, uh, Zoom platform? So move, let's move on. J, adequate provision has been made to prevent any significant adverse effect upon the public health, safety, or general welfare of the neighborhood or community. There's a lot of wiggle room there because it's quite subjective, but essentially, in my, uh, opinion, there's, there's nothing, this is not a, uh, a, uh, production facility, a manufacturing facility, something that would be generating, uh, 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 exhaust fumes, things of that nature. This is just an apartment complex. Let me ask for the way I'm understanding from people commenting on the planning board, uh, this is not applicable to, to this project? Anybody on the, uh, Zoom platform that wishes to address this matter? Not hearing? Let's move on to K. Adequate provision has been made to prevent any, uh, undue adverse effect upon the property values of adjacent or nearby properties. I know that was discussed, uh, on the twenty-ninth, it might have also been discussed on the, on the November first meeting, uh, but, uh, essentially, uh, I don't believe that there is any, uh, concerns that this is gonna detract from, uh, property value. So, uh, I'll ask for members of the planning board that might wish to, uh, expound on, on that, uh, comment.
I agree.
Anybody on the Zoom platform? Anybody on the Zoom platform, uh, wanting to address that about property values? Let me ask the, the public in attendance, that was something that came up for discussion at the public hearing, it might have also come up on November first. Uh, any comments about the impact of this facility on property values in the area? Not hearing any, let's move on. Paragraph L, adequate provision has been made to avoid any undue burden on municipal services. We have, uh, feedback, or I should say, more appropriately, comments, uh, from, uh, municipal, uh, officials concerning, uh, accommodations for the sewerage that will be, uh, dealt with coming from this apartment complex. That was, uh, from Jim, uh, Jim Saret, uh, uh, addressed this matter. There was also comments, uh, concerning, uh, uh, rubbish disposal and, uh, water supply, uh, coming from the, uh, uh, Director of Public Works. Uh, we also had, uh, comments, uh, received in writing, uh, from the, uh, main water company, and, uh, that's something that is something that is still in, uh, in review. The, uh, I got, uh, comments received from the fire chief. Uh, I'll read what I sent the fire chief, Tom Malcolm, who serves on this board, not present tonight. And my comments to Tom said, in October, Evan Campbell received an email from Marcus Nip, uh, with the main water company. Mr. Nip makes reference to a six inch line on Spring Street, waterline, that is. However, on the second page of his email, Mr. Nip mentions about peak demand to serve a fire sprinkler system at the proposed apartment complex. My questions to Tom were, what is your opinion about the water line on Spring Street being adequate to serve a sprinkler system at the proposed complex? Does this need to be addressed by the town through your department? Or is this matter handled through the Fire Marshal's Office? And Tom responded to me, I'll read that. It says, they, and I imagine they are the applicant, uh, proposing this, uh, project, they will have an engineer from the sprinkler company do the calculations on that and see if the six inch line will be sufficient or larger is needed, a larger line is needed. Then they will have to include this in the plans, which have to be approved by the Fire Marshal's Office. Usually, the engineer will work with plans review from the Fire Marshal's Office on this type of project. As far as, uh, municipal services, uh, we have, uh, water, sewer, uh, rubbish disposal. We have, uh, fire suppression or, uh, fire protection. Uh, we just heard from the fire chief by the comments I read, but it didn't deal with fire protection. But he's aware of obviously the, the need here. And, uh, we had comments received from, uh, Chief McDonough concerning, uh, this facility. Uh, he indicated that his, uh, unit can, uh, I would say, uh, accommodate this, uh, this amount of development in the area. Let me ask the planning board members, is there any, uh, follow-up questions or concerns, uh, concerning this, uh, matter? Let me ask if there's anyone on the Zoom platform that wants to address concerns on municipal services of being burdened, uh, by this complex? Hearing none?
I've, I've got one concern with the sprinkler system on a report. When is, when will that be available, do we know?
Uh, Mr. Bird, uh, did you hear that you commented, uh, about the sprinkler system? Uh, an engineer from, uh, your firm or that works with your firm is going to have to address this matter. Uh, it's not addressed at this point, but essentially going forward, it's going to be an issue that needs to be, uh, accommodated. And I'll mention that, uh, when this, uh, water, uh, line on Spring Street was discussed, there is a large twelve inch line on Central Street, but the cost to get from Central Street to Spring Street would be, uh, quite significant. Please go ahead if you have something to say.
Ooh, correct, yeah. So we have a few options. Um, the, the one that isn't feasible or viable would be bringing, um, a, a new service line down Spring Street or down Congress Street and then Spring Street onto the lot, that, that wouldn't be viable. Uh, however, if, and this assumes that the water flow um, off of the existing line is inadequate to service the building in the event of, uh, sprinkler activation. Uh, and there's calculations, I think it has to run for an hour or something to that effect. Um, if that is proven to be inadequate, we could, um, take an, uh, an alternative route, which would have a, um, generator backup pump and a reservoir in the basement that would store enough water uh, to run that calculation, to run the, the entire sprinkler system for, uh, the one hour period that's required. Um, again, so the, the next steps, um, would be that we would have a third party do hydrant flow testing in the area, um, to allow us to be able to, to determine what the exact draw is, uh, in real time. And then, um, compare that to the calculations of traditional water supply. Um, and then in the event of, uh, what would be needed based on, you know, pipe length and, and headers and all that kind of stuff. Um, all of that, though, um, excuse me, would have to be, uh, uh, designed, vetted, and stamped, uh, prior to us receiving a Fire Marshal permit, which would then be a condition of getting the local building permit. So, um, on balance, uh, there'll be certainly, yes, some more work that has to be done. Um, we have a backup option or two. Uh, in an ideal world, the line and the capacity that exists on Spring Street will be enough, but if not, we can, we can design ourselves around it.
Uh, I'll mention that the, uh, plans that were revised and they are dated, uh, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, indicate that the, uh, domestic water source to serve the facility, uh, would be a four inch line and the, uh, sprinkler system would be a six inch line. And there is a six inch line on, on Spring Street. Uh, I don't fully appreciate if that's sufficient, but I just want to mention what's in the plot plan that was submitted on October fourteenth.
Yeah, there's a lot more math that has to go into it, and I'm at the absolutely wrong person to try to, to, to speak to, um, anything to do with, uh, scientific calculations and numbers, but, um, the, the, from what I understand, the answer, uh, re- remains to be determined. Um, and not until we do the, um, adequate flow testing on hydrants in the area with a third party, um, that will, that will know for sure.
All right, thank you. Any, uh, further comments from members of the planning board concerning this matter? Any comments from the individuals on the Zoom platform? Let's, uh, let's move on. Uh, paragraph M, adequate provision has been made to assure the proper operation of the proposed businesses and or activities on the site through the provision of adequate and appropriate utilities, drainage, water supply, sewerage disposal, solid waste disposal, access, parking, and loading, and other necessary site improvements. Uh, we've touched on these, uh, already at this point. Uh, what wasn't mentioned up to this point was rubbish disposal. There's a, uh, accommodation at the south end of this facility, uh, to collect rubbish, and obviously that'll have to be taken care of. And as far as, uh, it being, uh, addressed by the, uh, uh, Public Works Director, uh, that I can say that, uh, Mr. Susie, when he was Public Works Director, uh, recent days, uh, prior to his retirement, did not address any problems with, uh, rubbish disposal from, uh, an apartment complex of this size.
If I, if I may, um, sorry, if I may, our intent is to have a third-party service, uh, provide, uh, the adequate timing and scheduling to, to pick up the rubbish and dispose of it.
All right, thank you. Any comments from planning board members concerning this matter? Any comments from other individuals on the Zoom platform? I'm going to move on to, uh, N, paragraph N, adequate provision has been made to assure that the proposed development conforms to, in all respects, with the provisions of this Part Two. This Part Two refers to the, uh, zoning ordinance and reference to this paragraph is applicable to the land use standards, which is, uh, section, article eight in the, in the zoning ordinance. Uh, many of the responses that were given prior to this, uh, section, were drawn from that, uh, article eight, the, uh, of the zoning ordinance. Uh, there are many, uh, paragraphs in that zoning ordinance. Many are not applicable to this facility, deal with campgrounds, things of that nature. It covers a, a wide range of, of land use standards. Uh, but essentially, in my opinion, uh, when I reviewed the zoning ordinance and what was asked for in this site plan review, section one twenty-five eleven, uh, one eleven, uh, I think we have, uh, made certain that, uh, provisions have been, uh, accommodated, uh, relative to site plan approval based on the zoning ordinance. If there's, uh, comments from the planning board? Hearing none. Comments from, uh, individuals on the, uh, Zoom platform? Hearing none. I'll move on to paragraph O. The applicant has adequate technical and financial capability to carry out the project as proposed and to meet any conditions of approval applied to the planning board, applied by the plant, planning board, excuse me. Uh, essentially, the, uh, uh, technical capability, uh, where, uh, I am personally comfortable with the, uh, uh, individual who is, uh, not in, uh, present to, tonight, uh, concerning the, uh, uh, engineering of this facility and the, uh, construction, uh, of it and the concerns that need to be addressed, uh, if this facility is, is built. Uh, as far as the, uh, financial capacity, this is something that came up, uh, previously, and, uh, it was mentioned tonight that, uh, we do not have the, uh, document or documents from the applicant on, uh, sufficient, uh, documentation about, uh, financial, uh, capacity to build this, uh, facility. It's going to cost, correct me if I'm wrong, please, uh, somewhere between seven and eight million dollars. Uh, and the concern was that, uh, the project, once initiated, would have, uh, sufficient financial, uh, support to carry it through to completion, and we won't be, we, the town, won't be left with something that, uh, is incomplete or not, uh, uh, a functional apartment complex. What I would recommend is that this requirement be, uh, moved to, uh, the, uh, permitting process that would be, uh, that would be required to, uh, initiate development of this project, uh, and that, uh, prior to any advancement of this project, uh, going forward, would be, uh, uh, providing the financial information that is requested, uh, on the, uh, project being supported, uh, sufficiently to, uh, carry it through to completion. Let me ask for individuals that, uh, on the planning board that want to address this matter.
I'm comfortable based on their past experience that they will and do have the adequate financial capability to do it. Uh, I think we can go ahead. Uh, I am in favor of moving, uh, ahead with approval with the assumption that they will provide, uh, that in writing for the record.
Thank you. Uh, any other, yes, go ahead, please.
I agree with Evan. I agree with Evan for exactly the same reasons. His panquish, I don't think they're gonna, you know, short of us, our economy going through the floor, I don't, I don't see a problem looming, but I want to see him running. That's it.
I too have some comfort in, uh, in, uh, knowing the, to some degree, the panquish organization. However, this requirement is something that everyone that comes before the Board for Site Plan Review is required to provide. Uh, it's just a matter of not so much what's being provided, but when. And essentially, if we have this, uh, postponed or put on the, uh, uh, I would say, requirement for, uh, uh, permitting of this project, if it's approved, I think that would, uh, suffice to make certain that there is adequate, uh, financial capacity, uh, before this project actually puts a shovel in the ground. Any other comments from individuals? What we reviewed tonight, uh, will be written up in minutes, uh, concerning this, this meeting, but no, no, someone? Lou, are you trying to speak? Oh, okay.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
All right. Uh, if there's, uh, no other comments, I've covered the criteria in section one twenty-five, one eleven, and, uh, I need a motion on how we're going to move on this, we're going to approve it or not approve it.
I'd just like to make a motion that we table this. It's going to be, as you said, on the minutes in the next meeting, and we can vote at that time, once the letter's in.
So you're making a motion to, to table this matter?
Yes, until, until our next meeting, at which time we can vote on everything.
All right, is there a, a second to that motion? There is no, no second to that motion, uh, so we'll move on. Uh, what is being asked for here is a, a motion to approve the project as stipulated by the, uh, criteria that were reviewed or not approve the project because of deficiencies in its presentation or its need in the, in the community.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Evan.
I might work that we approve the project based on this successful conclusion of reviewing the site permit?
Okay, there's been a, a motion made to approve the project based on the application that was received in September, actually, and then revised in October. But again, everything that was discussed tonight will be factors involved in the approval process if it's the project is approved. Is there a, a second to that motion? Heidi, I'm sorry, you, you have a
No, I second the motion.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Avren to approve the project as we reviewed tonight, and a second by Heidi. Those in favor of the motion, oh, excuse me, discussion concerning the motion? Any discussion that someone wishes to bring up at this point? Hearing none, since public members are present, is there any comments by members of the public? Not hearing any comments, I'll call the motion. Those in favor of the motion as presented, show of hands, please. And Heidi, you seconded, so I'm assuming that you, you approved the motion?
Yes.
There's no opposite, there's no opposition. Essentially, the project is approved for Site Plan by Site Plan Review. And what was itemized as things that need to be addressed will be summarized in minutes. And I'll be drafting a letter to the applicant stating what was discussed tonight. If there's no other matter to come before the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn. A motion, Michelle, yes?
Yes, I'm moving adjourned.
There's been a motion made to adjourn the meeting, I've got 5:44, is there a second to that motion? Second by Avren Danforth, any, any discussion? Let me ask the opposite, is there anybody opposed to adjourned the meeting at 5:44? So moved, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, happy holidays.
You as well.